Good morning. We're going to get started this morning with an invocation by Kanan Goldstein, chaplain for the Oklahoma City Police Department, and that will be followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Matt Hinkle. Please stand as you are able.
Blessed Holy One, we are gathered today united in purpose and spirit to attend to the needs of our community. Let us take a moment to pause, breathe, and reflect on how wonderful and powerful it is to have the opportunity to work together for the well-being of our great city. We ask that you grant us wisdom in our discussions so that the decisions made reflect justice and compassion. May our hearts remain open as we listen to each voice honoring the unique contributions that we all bring. Lord, guide the work before us, for every decision holds the power to create a difference. May our efforts here today reflect your wisdom and uphold the trust placed in us to serve our community. Amen.
United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you both. Well, I call this meeting of the City Council to order, and I have some presentations under Office of the Mayor, and will make my way to the front. And maybe our veteran employer champions can meet me there. All right. Well, we are joined here by a great collection of folks who are supporting our veterans. And of course, earlier this month, we commemorated Veterans Day here in Oklahoma City. And we'd like to hear a little bit more about this program that Oklahoma City is involved in. And so I would ask the clerk to read this citation.
Whereas Oklahoma City hosts Tinker Air Force Base and its patriotic community that is the home of thousands of veterans, as well as dozens of monuments across our city honoring those who have served. And whereas the city of Oklahoma City officially honors its veterans each year on Veterans Day, a city holiday recognized earlier this month. And whereas the commitment and sacrifice of our soldiers, sailors, airmen, marines, coast guardsmen, and merchant mariners make us immensely grateful and proud. And whereas it is important that Oklahoma City also honor those who have served by being a community that supports veterans in the workplace. And consequently, the city of Oklahoma City partners with the Oklahoma Veterans Alliance to recognize area employers that support our veterans in their careers. And whereas the Oklahoma Veterans Alliance diligently surveys and evaluates these employers, awarding them the esteemed designation of Veteran Employer Champions for their exemplary efforts in providing workforce opportunities to veterans. And whereas the 2024 Oklahoma City Veteran Employer Champions are Rvest Bank, BOK Financial, Cox Communications, Harrison Energy Partners, Lowe's Home Improvement, the Oklahoma Employment Security Commission, Oklahoma Veterans United, One Gas, One Oak, Inc., and Volunteers of America. Now therefore, I David Holt, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby honor and recognize the vital contributions of our veterans and commend the Oklahoma City-based Veteran Employer Champions along with the Oklahoma Veterans Alliance for their dedication to creating a bright future for our veterans.
Thank you. Well, this is an outstanding program and certainly reflects our communities' support of our veterans. We'd love to hear just a few more words maybe about it from the designated speaker for this group, Mark Morgan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for having us. My name is Mark Morgan. I'm the Community Executive Liaison. I have the privilege of representing our CEO Rachel Runfola with Oklahoma Veterans United. The Veteran Employer Network is 128 organizations across the state of Oklahoma with 239 members. The champions before you and the 14 other champions represent 26,000 employees and family members across the state. And Mayor, I want to say thank you so much for you and the council for recognizing them. These organizations represent organizations that have made it their commitment to not only hire, retain, but also take care of veterans and their family members throughout their career. So I want to say thank you to all the employer champions. It's not an easy badge to win. We have 128 organizations, 50 submitted surveys, and only 24 actually achieve the champion status. So Mayor, once again, thank you so much, and congratulations to all the champions.
Thank you. So yes, up here, we have representatives of the Veteran Employer Champions, some of whom are veterans themselves, and we're just so grateful for everything that you do. So let's hear it for both our employer champions and our veterans. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Next up, if we could have our Small Business Saturday friends come forward. I think two things that signal the start of the holiday season are the tree lighting and when this group comes to celebrate Small Business Saturday. So we want to learn a little bit more about Small Business Saturday, and so I will ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas the city of Oklahoma City celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our economy and community. And whereas small and micro businesses are key drivers of our city's growth, employing approximately two-thirds of our workforce and consistently boosting our economy and sales tax revenue. And whereas small businesses also enhance tourism opportunities and give back to our community by donating to local nonprofits. And whereas independent retailers and restaurants have played an essential role in the revitalization of our neighborhoods and commercial districts. And whereas these retailers add value and character to our community, enriching our local culture. And whereas Oklahoma City customers who shop on Small Business Saturday recognize that shopping at small, independently owned businesses supports their commitment to making purchases that have a positive social and economic impact and are essential to their community. And whereas local businesses create jobs, stimulate our economy, and help preserve our communities. And whereas national advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I David Holt, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby proclaim November 30, 2024, as Small Business Saturday in Oklahoma City, and encourage residents to support small businesses and merchants on this day and throughout the year.
Well, obviously, as we know, small businesses, as stated in the proclamation, are a major part of our economy. And this has been a great tradition that has, I think, really penetrated with the people of Oklahoma City and people across the country. And there's a lot of cool activity that happens around Small Business Saturday. So I certainly encourage everybody to get out on November 30. And we have Clay O'Nash here with the, you'll have to give the right name of your organization, but has been carrying this torch for several years now. We'd love to hear a few words from you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Independent Shopkeepers Association, but ISA for short because we know it's way too long. But thank you for your continued support of Small Business Saturday. I think we all know that the holiday season is a crucial time for small businesses and independent retailers specifically. For most of them, they'll actually make 30% of their annual sales during those weeks between Thanksgiving and Christmas. And I think I say this every year, but the businesses we choose to purchase from and support in those weeks are the ones who will still be here in our city's landscape next year. So it's very much an investment in our city that we're making when we're shopping local. And you know, these businesses and all the others that couldn't be here today have played a huge role in shaping our city's identity and bringing our commercial districts back to life. So we're hoping that everyone joins us in making that choice and decision to shop local on Small Business Saturday and throughout the holiday season. So we have Kirsten Holder to my left, who is actually with Metro Family Magazine, and she is on the ISA board. We have Amy Williamson with Heenan's Home Furnishings. Micah Warchester, which is, she is with ISA, and she also owns a bookshop called The Band Press. And then Jade Urrash with Trips and Cheers in Midtown. And so many more who couldn't be here because they're working hard to get ready for all the customers.
Thank you so much, and let's hear it for our independent shopkeepers. Okay, Mike Clark, why don't you come forward, our Employee of the Month? All right, Mike, we'd like to learn a little bit more about you, and so I'm going to ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Mike Clark has been a city employee for 15 years and is an engineering projects manager in the Public Works Department. And whereas Mike Clark was the project manager of a $4 million streetscape project in the Paseo District. And whereas Mike Clark was recognized by the Paseo District with an ovation from property owners during the streetscape ribbon cutting for exemplifying the characteristics of a successful project manager. And whereas Mike Clark stayed calm under pressure and was solution focused when problems arose. And whereas Mike Clark creates positive relationships with stakeholders he works with by showing excellent organization and communication skills throughout all of his construction projects. And whereas Mike Clark demonstrates qualities of an effective leader such as integrity, innovation, dedication, and empathy. And whereas this council desires to recognize Mike Clark for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Mike Clark, November 2024 South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
Thank you. Now, this is a resolution, Mike, so we're going to do a quick vote here and see if things go your way. All right, so let's see if we can get a motion in a second. All right, we've got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. I wish to vote aye. All right, passes unanimously. Well, Mike, really impressive work, and I know, I'm sure I speak for Councilman Cooper, who is a bit of a Paseo enthusiast when I express our gratitude for that particular project. But obviously, you've done a lot of amazing things over the last 15 years, and we're very grateful. We would love to hear a few words from you, if that's okay.
Thank you, Mayor Holt and Council. This recognition is just so incredibly humbling for me, as there are countless employees who can and should be acknowledged for their work. The things that I try to do each day are influenced by the leadership of those above me. It's enhanced through the assistance of fellow employees, and it's made better through interaction with the residents that we try to serve. I know that Oklahoma City has challenges, and we sometimes differ in how we would like to pursue some of the things that arise. And I hope that maybe at a point in time, our efforts would be inspiring or empowering to the next generation that would want to serve our community.
Well said. Thank you so much. Let's hear it for Mike.
Hey, Mayor. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I know you said you spoke for me.
I tried so hard to keep this from happening, but yes, go ahead.
I know, I know. But this just happened, and I just want to double down. It's important for you all to hear. The merchants, you just heard about small businesses. The small businesses in Paseo love this man. Love this man. Respect this man. Reach out to me to connect them to this worker when they have problems to this day after the streetscape project. I need you all to know that. That is so important. And I know he hates every bit of this because he just never wants attention, but I just need, from this position, to double down on the honor you received today.
All right, thank you. All right, if Mario could come forward. Come on, come on up. All right, Mario, you are the Teacher of the Month, and we'd love to hear a little bit more about you. And so I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Mario Roldan has been named Teacher of the Month for November 2024 by the Oklahoma City Public Schools Foundation and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. And whereas Mario serves as the Spanish teacher at Crooked Oak High School, where he delivers top-quality classroom instruction, collaborates and plans with teammates, and works with parents and community members. And whereas Mario is the Crooked Oak Public Schools District Teacher of the Year for 2023-2024 school year. And whereas Mario has worked with the students of Crooked Oak High School since 2011 and has taught in Oklahoma since 2006. During this time, he won numerous awards. And whereas Mario works tirelessly to meet his students' individual learning needs by differentiating his instruction and working to accommodate their various learning styles. He loves when a student who speaks absolutely no Spanish comes into his class and really starts to understand. And whereas Mario considers his greatest achievement in education to be the impact he has on his students. It is an honor to him when alumni seek him out to tell of their careers, families, and future endeavors. And whereas Mario is extremely passionate about touching the lives of his students through teaching and developing relationships. Some of his greatest memories include playing the guitar with students during his games. And whereas Mario believes that young lives can be changed when we take the time to truly know them. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Mario Roldan on his selection as November 2024 Teacher of the Month by the Oklahoma City Public Schools Foundation and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Thank you. Well, Mario, we're so incredibly grateful for the work you do here with the kids of Oklahoma City. And we'd love to hear, oh wait, let me pass this resolution first. Let's get a motion in a second. All right, we have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. I wish to vote aye. Passes unanimously. All right, now, Mario, we would love to hear a few words from you.
Thank you, Mayor Holt, and thank you to the council. I just am very appreciative of the opportunity to be here and for the recognition that I have received. I just want to mention that I am just one of many in my school, and that we're all equally dedicated to the children of Oklahoma, from the administration to the faculty and the support staff. I am just one of many, and I believe that my colleagues are equally deserving of this and many more awards. I work with fantastic people to empower and educate your children, and we all appreciate the chance to do so. I just want to let you know that, at least with the faculty and the staff that I work with and our admin, I know your children are in good hands, and we will continue to work tirelessly to protect and educate and empower your children.
Thank you. Why don't we hear from Mario and all the teachers at Crooked Oak? All right. We also have Item C. This is an appointment to the Economic Development Trust, really a reappointment. Take a motion on that. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And then we have Item D. We're going to vote on Item D2 to enter into executive session to discuss the appointment of a person to the Ward 7 vacancy, but we'll handle that actually at the end of the meeting and of our other business, as we often do, and then come back for the resolution. So but right now, let's go ahead and vote on executive session, D2. Have a motion in a second for executive session. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. There are no items from council. Item 5, City Manager Reports. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mayor, we've got two items in addition to claims and payroll that are on today. One item is a presentation that was scheduled today for the working group findings from the Labor Peace Agreement. We're going to move that item to December 3, so we'll present that, the findings on December 3 on that one. And then we have the first quarter report from the Visit OKC from the Convention Visitors Bureau. Report's in your packet. Glad to answer any questions. We could get in contact with Zach Craig if you have any further questions. And then we just have claims and--
Okay, Item 7, Requests for Uncontested Continuances. And we've got a few things to handle here. It's a little unique today. All right. So first of all, of course, on the agenda is listed Item 11F. That will be deferred until December 17. Now, I'm going to call on Councilman Stonecypher for his request on another item.
Yes, at Page 16, Item 11E is pertaining to PUD 2026. Mr. Kelly Work and some of the residents surrounding the proposed development have asked that this be deferred so we can have further discussions about the development. And just so, I don't want people sitting here through an entire meeting and then finding out that we're deferring it. I'd like to move for the deferral at this time.
To December 3?
December 17.
17, okay.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Next up, I'd like to call on Mark Zitzau to address an item he would like to strike.
Good morning, Mark Zitzau with Johnson &amp; Associates, 1 East Sheridan Avenue. We'd like to withdraw SPOD 1667. It's a SPOD at Northeast 16th and Broadway. Due to some site constraints for this particular project, we're asking it be withdrawn.
So, okay, you are referencing Item 11J, and you're speaking for the applicant. Now, you're withdrawing the application on behalf of the applicant. For our purposes, that means that we are striking the item, Item 11J. Okay?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
It takes a lot to shock me. I'm a bit shocked. Is this the development I am to understand, the restaurant? So I don't know if anyone's spoken with Councilwoman Hammond. She reached out to me last, I want to say Wednesday, and had asked me to move the proposal. I don't mind it being struck, except, because I'm not here to do that. Does she reach out this morning? Like, has anyone talked--
So just to be clear, it's really, it's an application. So we can't make someone make an application. You know what I mean?
Sure.
Yeah, I get it.
But I'm saying, like, she's not here. Has anyone talked to her? Is this a simple question that I have?
Yeah, sure. And normally, in some other circumstances on the agenda, maybe that would be relevant. But if the applicant is withdrawing their application, no council member can stop them. You know what I mean? Like--
Okay, I'm just--
Yeah, yeah. No, I get it. I have not heard from her, but the applicant is withdrawing, and that's kind of the end of the matter when that happens.
Okay, all right.
I hear you. I get it. I get it. It's a little--
It's on the record. I'm just saying what I just said.
Right. Yeah, it's a free country, and they've chosen to withdraw their application. My disappointment comes from, I will say, I guess, this will be one of the more notable withdrawals we've ever seen, because this is a very popular restaurant with a lot of fans, and there's been a lot of discussion in our community about this project. Obviously, I'll publicly be on the record to say we certainly hope your client will continue to look at Oklahoma City and find a suitable site, because this will be disappointing news to some here in our community.
Understood. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, and finally, before I get to the City Manager, we have some Ward 7 zoning cases, and there is obviously no Ward 7 council member right now. And as we all know generally, council members kind of drive that conversation for the applicants who wish to pursue their applications. And so we're going to defer Items 11D and 11G. These are both in Ward 7. I would note for you that Item F is already deferred. So D and G, and we'll defer these to December 3. Okay, that's fine. All right. Apparently, the applicants have weighed in on this and would like their items deferred to the 17th, which I'm sure, should we appoint a new council member today as planned, they would love to hear that. So I don't think that's anything they'll be disappointed in. A little more time would be welcome. So Items D and Item G to December 17.
Is A also?
No, I'm going to get to that.
Okay.
So I told you this is going to be a complicated continuance docket. So, okay, so there's that. Item A is the last remaining Ward 7 case that I have not discussed to this point. So the client, the applicant there is saying-- So the client—the applicant there is saying—this morning, they have exigent circumstances and would not like to defer. They would like to move forward. This was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission. I would suggest if there are people today who protest, I think maybe we may have to move towards a deferral, but if it is without protest and with the unanimous vote from the Planning Commission, I'm inclined to proceed. I don't feel like super strongly about that, but certainly, they would like to move forward. And I do hate for them to be caught in, obviously, a very strange situation that obviously doesn't happen very often and have to delay through no fault of their own. So maybe for now, I suggest we leave that alone. When we get to the item, we can always still defer it, but as far as the continuance docket, I'm going to not suggest that one be included. Okay. And with that, Mr. City Manager, what do you have?
I feel like this is kind of like—
May I add one more thing?
Sure.
To confuse matters even more.
Okay.
On item J, you'll have to do that in a separate vote, and I'll have to recuse myself.
These aren't voted on.
Okay, all right.
So you're good.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Feels a little anticlimactic now that we get to this, but we do want to start at page 12. We're going to strike an item—item 11—or item 9BU will be stricken from the agenda, and we need to do some work on that and bring it back later. So we're just going to strike that from the agenda. So it's page 12, item 9BU. Page 18, 11P1, dilapidated structures. All of these are stricken from the agenda. Item A, 7915, DeBar Circle, to re-notify for a new owner. And then item C, 4201 North Youngs Boulevard, to re-notify. The item continuing on page 18, item 11Q1, unsecured structures. This item is stricken from the agenda. Item D, 3504 North Pennsylvania Avenue, to re-notify for a new owner. Continuing on page 18, 11R1, abandoned buildings. Item B, 7915, DeBar Circle. And then item G on page 19, 4201 North Youngs Boulevard, to re-notify. That's all the items that I have.
Okay. All right. You've heard all the requests for uncontested continuances, and with that objection, that will be the order. All right. Item 8, Revocable Permits and Events. Item 8A is a revocable permit with the Oklahoma City Tours LLC, the Oklahoma City PPA, and the Oklahoma Industries Authority to hold tours within the concourse. And we have Jeffrey Tannenhaus here. Typically, you just kind of talk about what you're doing here.
Good morning. My name is Jeffrey Tannenhaus, and I've started a new local small business doing guided walks here in downtown Oklahoma City. That will include the Underground, which many of you know for convenience, but it actually is a source of fascination to visitors and even locals who do not work downtown. So I'm hoping to get a permit to take people safely and securely on a guided walk, talking about the city's history with the art down there as well as the historic photos.
I have a quick question. Why is this reference is the concourse in the agenda when it was renamed the Underground like over a decade ago?
Not real sure.
Okay.
It's without intent.
Well, you might run that down. I prefer, obviously, the name that we chose some time ago, so—but sounds great. Thank you very much. And Ward 6 is not represented here today, but I'm sure we can still proceed if there is a motion or any—
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do you have a website?
Yes.
What is it?
It's OKC.Tours, T-O-U-R-S, no .com.
Thank you. I'll move for approval.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. There it is. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have items A through G we could take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, we're going to adjourn OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have items A through E we could take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, now we'll reconvene the council, where we are on item 9, the Consent Docket. And there are presentations scheduled for AY, AZ, and BH. Is there anything else a council member wishes to pull out for separate vote or discussion, comment, question?
AE.
AE.
For a separate vote, and I'd like to hear about S.
Is your separate vote something—
It's for the jail.
It's not, okay. It's not a recusal.
No.
Okay, got it. And item S?
S.
Okay. Okay, is there anything else? Hearing them, we'll go in order, which means we'll start with you, Councilman Hinkle, item S.
Oh, Mark. Sorry, I tried to catch you beforehand. I know this is just a termination of a—but we've got major flooding going on down there, and it happened last weekend because of—not because of the new development there. I just wonder what and how this is going to affect what is already a huge problem.
Sure. So this particular application really is cleanup from a previous closure and vacation of Statute of Right-of-Way. So this easement that we're closing is a portion of that where the water line fell outside of. And so there's also a dedication application for the new water line easement. So ultimately, this won't have any impact on the flooding in the area, but happy to talk more offline on the drainage down there. We've looked into it based on requests from a planning commissioner.
Thank you.
Yep.
Item Z has some residents who've signed to speak from CSU. There's three of them. I don't know, are you all wanting to speak or as a group? It's John Dunning, Jim Dunlop, and Margaret Morgan. You wish to speak?
I will.
Okay, do you wish to speak? You signed up to speak?
Well, I will.
You don't have to.
I didn't think I'd wait in first. I got a notice. First of all, thank you. I got this notice—we have—my wife and I just recently moved to Oklahoma City. I've lived in Norman and Edmund for most of the time I've been in Oklahoma, like 40 years. We just recently moved to Oklahoma City to try the urban life. I live at 2201 Northwest 30th Street, which is about four doors down from CSU. How do I want to put this? I'm not opposed to CSU. I got this notice, and it—it's—it talks about littering, loitering, fear to families. I don't know that that's the case. One of the things I've learned coming to Oklahoma City is the homeless problem. I never, living in Norman and Edmund, never knew there was such a homeless problem for adults and kids. I can see the necessity for something like CSU. I will say, though, that observing things over—in my lifetime of how things are done, you know, in Edmund, a new crest goes in or a lowe's, and they put in extra lanes in the highway—they’re on the road. They put in traffic lights. They put in sidewalks. One of the things I observe with CSU is these kids are going back and forth to this facility every day. There's no sidewalks. They're walking in the middle of the streets. They can come in from anywhere at all, and there's trash, there's loitering. This is a neighborhood I just moved into, and I just had no idea the problems of, like I say, the homeless. But I wonder if—if it was given any consideration about the infrastructure to support this facility on this particular street in this particular neighborhood. I'm not opposed to CSU. That's not why I'm here. But when I got this notice and heard it was going to be addressed, I just thought, what is the answer? What do we do? Because this does affect the neighborhood. My wife and I go on walks every day, and we're picking up trash constantly that's left behind by the kids. They sit around in the empty lots, they eat and partake in whatever's been given to them, and then the trash is all left behind. And I don't—I don't mind picking it up, but it's like, are there better answers? You know, what was done to look at what the impact would be to the neighborhood? And now I'm a neighbor, just having bought this house recently, and I guess I just want to be part of the raising awareness cause. What can be done? Yeah, so—
We're at time.
Yeah, okay. Just, thanks, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next up is item AE, and Councilman Hinkle has requested a separate vote. Is there anything you wanted to say about it?
When I got elected, it was to be fiscally responsible, and I have a hard time spending $200,000 on something we're going to tear down just because we're waiting to tear it down. So sorry if I've hurt anybody's feelings, but I just can't support this.
Okay, all right. Well, let's see if we can get a motion in a second on the item. This is item 9AE. We have a motion. Is there a second? And maybe on this case, I'm going to say that verbally. If you would verbalize a second, going once, going twice, motion dies for lack of a second. So AE, we will consider as just not voted on and not approved. Correct, Kenny? Is that the right?
Correct.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Stay on the consent docket?
No.
I think it just dies.
Won't be on the consent docket unless—you unless you defer it from today or put it back on.
Would you like to make a case for some other action?
Yeah, that one council member removing, you know, asking to vote it separately, and we said, let's not vote it separately. All we voted on was whether we voted separately. That's all we voted on, right?
No, we were voting on the item, and we don't even have two members who want to vote yes for the item, apparently.
You were voting separately on the item.
Okay.
Which tends to indicate, even if somebody did move it, it would then fail.
Okay.
That's generally how. So—but if you want to ask the council to consider a deferral—
In my situation, I do not disagree with Councilman Hinkle on this. I don't like the idea that we're boarding this up because at some point, we think probably the path is we're going to tear this down. But the reality is, we've got a building that's sitting there that is in horrible condition that we aren't boarding it up, and we aren't securing it in a way that we would expect the residents to do that. So as long as it is still there, then for me, I feel like I need to step forward and say, we need to treat this building the way that we would expect other residents who have a building, even if they plan on tearing it down. We require them to board it up and keep it secured in a way that we would require of other residents. So I want to be that kind of resident for our community.
And I don't want to be argumentative, but we've got a 60-acre salvage yard across the street from a billion-dollar park that is sitting there that needs to be torn down. We've got a burned liquor store at Southwest 44th and Santa Fe that's been there for three years and isn't boarded up, and it needs—I mean, there's—all over the city, and those are citizen problems, but I mean, once again, I don't want to hurt anybody's feelings or make anybody mad, but I'm—I just—to me, that is not fiscally responsible money to spend.
Two things to unpack here. One is—I mean, obviously, in all those cases, the city is moving through a legal process on those sites you mentioned. We would be moving through the same legal process against ourselves—
That's right.
—if we didn't own this.
That's right.
But because we do, we're basically getting a pass—
Yes.
—that we're not giving those other sites. If it is—the—if it is the majority will of the council ultimately—I mean, you're right. This needs to come to a head one way or the other.
Yes.
I would suggest to council members, if they wish to see this demolished, that's an item that could appear on the next council agenda under Items from Council.
Yes.
But I think one way that it needs to get boarded—
That's right.
Or it needs to get—
That's right. And I don't—I mean, we've brought the item forward twice to have—to demolish the building, and it's been voted down.
Well, the way I'd weigh in on all this, since our first RFP on this building went out in 2011, and we did RFP after RFP, and no one has ever come up with a solution to making this building work. And we had all these people that were going to go register it with the Historical Society, national and state. That never happened. We had all these people that were going to come up with stor—using it for storage space since many of the floors are six and a half feet tall, and you can't even fit in there. And so I think I agree with the mayor. This needs to come to a head, and it needs to come to a head at our next meeting.
And I'm good with that either direction. I think it's like, if we don't—if we aren't going to vote for this and approve doing this, then it does seem that really it's time to push it forward then. And if a council member wants to bring that forward—I brought it forward twice and failed it. So I feel like, you know, and the message then was, we're fine tearing it down if we have something else we're going to put in its place. We have plans for things we want to do there in the future. We're just not at a place yet that we've got that approved. Okay?
Well—
Are you caught up? You know what's going on or where we're at?
Yes, yes. I feel like I just got the—previously on Days of Our Lives. The—so, two things, well, maybe three. One, the list of places—I was not aware of some of the places Councilman Hinkle is talking about. Can we get an update on that and like where we are in the process?
Sure.
Because I always think—I don't think of things as zero-sum games. Like, if these needs are there for Councilman Hinkle, then what can the rest of council be doing to help address that—those needs, right? I don't want him to be having to be the only candidate.
And as Mayor said, on those buildings, we are following the legal process where we provide a citation. There's just a process that we have to go through before we get to the place that if they're not going to demolish it, if it needs to be, that we could step in and do that. So I think—and we'll confirm that on both of those, but I believe both of those are in that process.
I hear you. What I guess I'm requesting as the Word 2 councilperson at the very least is just like kind of continuous updates on where we are in that process because clearly, this is a frustrating thing for someone to see.
Right.
And—and again, I didn't know about those things, so just want to make sure you have like the advocacy and support that you need, Councilman. Two, you know, if Assistant City Manager McDermid were here, we would hear—and this is to Councilman Stonecypher's point and to yours, City Manager, like, yeah, there were external folk, Councilman, who—exactly, I remember some of those conversations about, oh, we want to do this, that, and the other with this building, but the city has ideas. We have ideas, like as a government, of what we would like to do, the manager's office. And I would suggest that we head in that direction rather than rushing to put up a proposal next week to demolish it. I mean, city staff—in fact, you know, and I don't know all the details, right? But I know the city staff has ideas of what they would like to do, and so I just think cooler heads should prevail there. I'd like to hear those ideas, and in fact, those ideas are time-sensitive, Councilman. If I—if I'm understanding it right, the idea is that whatever the city wants to do is proposing to do with this building, the bond, the September 2025 bond is our only go at it. And look, I hear you. I do. I mean, being John Malkovich, type short, you know, ceilings, like, I'm not here to just preserve to preserve. Like, something needs to be functional, right? And it sounds like the staff has function.
So on our side, there's two things here. One is, on our perspective, we've looked at it. Maps took a hard look at this for the diversion hub to see if there was any possibility, tried to work that to use that existing building, could not find a way to make that work. The operator said, we just can't make that work and function the way we need. So we made an effort. What we've determined is, we do not have a use for the building as it stands. And what I was conveying before is, the message that I got from council previously was, it wasn't a problem tearing it down, but didn't want to tear it down just to make a parking lot, that if we have another purpose that's going there, where we could preserve some of the history of the building within a new building, so we tear it down for a new building. And that's what I'm talking about in the bond program. We're evaluating a couple of uses that we have needs for in that area, where it would actually take the building down, but we— actually take the building down, but we would put something else there, and then work to preserve some of the history of the building within a new building. That would be our plan. There is another group that has approached, that's wanting to look at this, a private group that's looking at this, that wants to have an opportunity, and Aubrey has more information on that, can speak to that. But that's another one that's out there, but again, as Councilman Stonecifer said, we've been through this path multiple different times, to not have a resolution at the end of it. So that's really kind of the two angles that are there. One is a group that's still out there that would like to see what they could do with the building, and then the other would be our desire to remove the building ultimately, and be able to put something else in its place.
So, I, okay, I think I didn't realize my microphone wasn't on, so for the people on YouTube, yeah. Again, so I guess for me, what I'm proposing is, I think we need to secure this now, but I, it sounds like we have less than a year ahead of us, like, the bond, whichever one of those two routes we go, that is it. Am I hearing something?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's right.
So I think that's the timeline. Like, that should be the time, that's the timeline with which I am comfortable, is what can be preserved through the city's needs. I really want to do everything we can to avoid a surface area parking lot. Like, I just, why, how many more? But whether it's the city needs, or it's outside groups' needs, and I just think we have that year. So I guess what I'm saying is, I don't think we should rush to put something up for complete demolition, you know, the week after Thanksgiving. That doesn't, I don't understand that. That doesn't seem reasonable to me.
But spending $200,000 to secure it does.
To secure, we do, okay, I hear what you're saying. And I heard your fiscal conservative comment earlier. We don't, my thinking is, we don't know yet, Councilman, which portions of this structure we will preserve. My worry is, if we come in and wrecking ball, it could have been the part we were going to preserve. We don't, we, am I right? We don't know which parts of this building?
I mean, I couldn't, I couldn't say for certain, but I can tell you what I believe from what we've gotten with talking with engineers and looking at this, is that preserving parts of the structure is probably not possible, that really probably what we would do is just preserve some of the history of the building. May take an artifact or something out of the building, not the facade, you know, saving the facade or something, it'd be something like that. But then preserving really the written history of the building, and recognizing within a new building, what stood there previously and what happened there.
So nothing within this building we are talking about reserving?
No, I mean, it could be like a jail cell door, or there could be something like that that could be preserved, that still could be handled if we did a demolition, that we could say there's, you know, some historic pieces that we could pull and hold and preserve.
That is what I am talking about. We do not have specifics yet of what within that cell, what within those corridors, what within those walls. We just don't know. And rather than, you know, the old saying, "You come in there with a hammer to a gnat", right? I'm just saying that we can slow, and by the way, I'm not saying slow down ad infinitum. In my mind, the bond election next September is, it's it. Like, we do not have funding, other than the bond, to do anything, and that's if the city does it. The private sector has this other option, but that's, I guess, what I'm saying is, I don't want to just go in there willy-nilly knocking things down, when we don't even know what we would be able to preserve. That is, that just seems responsible. Hi, thank you.
Hi, Council. Aubrey McDermid, Assistant City Manager. Just wanted to clarify a process point, too, about demolition, is that demolition's approved by the Downtown Design Review Committee, so if council wants to initiate that, it would just be that the city initiates the application to DDRC, who then denies or approves demolition. The last time that this issue came before the DDRC, their criteria do not support demolition of a historic resource for the purpose of putting nothing in its place, or putting a surface parking lot in its place. So without an alternative proposal, I would expect that we would get the same decision as we got last time.
Do you see what I am, what I'm saying?
And I've got a question.
Yes, Councilman?
Sorry. Let's say they deny it, then can it be appealed, and does it come to this body on appeal? No, it goes to the Board of Adjustment. And then what? The Board of Adjustment can then be appealed to District Court. Okay. Thank you for the process.
Aubrey, real quick, are you saying that we have applied to demolish this before?
The city of Oklahoma City, and I cannot remember if we, the application was pulled from DDRC, but I think we did attempt to submit a demolition application to DDRC.
I think that's what we had brought forward, was to move forward in the process, and that's what died here.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever gotten that far.
Yeah, I looked at it all the way back to 2011, and I've never seen anything like that.
Okay, it may not have actually been heard.
Yeah, I think we stopped it, but nonetheless, I get your point. Like, staff would recommend probably...
Right, that it doesn't meet that requirement.
Based on ordinances, staff would recommend denial to DDRC. Obviously, they're human beings, and they can decide what they want to do, but I get what you're here, I hear what you're saying, and it's, point well made.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to make very clear, this is, y'all remember, you know, there was a church in my ward that was not in good condition, and it needed to come down. So this isn't just, you know, preservation for the sake of preservation, it is almost word for word what you just heard from our Assistant City Manager. And I really appreciate, Councilman, your process question, question.
I feel like what's come out of this is, obviously, a charge to the City Manager to try to bring this to a head. And I'm sure a reasonableness from most of the council to do one thing or the other in the next, in the next, you know, few months, or weeks, I don't know. But, yeah, it's like, one thing, one or the other has to happen, because it's a little bit, I think, embarrassing for the city that we're not maintaining our own property the way we expect others to.
Yes.
So, okay.
And then, thanks to the city clerk, I just mentioned the YouTube stuff, I want to make sure that the people listening heard my earlier request, is that Councilman Hinkle made a list of places that are unsecured, and I think, at least for Ward Two, if not the rest of the council, to be kept up on those, that process. Where we are with that process, the securing of that, those buildings, for both the safety and aesthetic reasons.
Yep. Okay, so that item has died, for now. And with the City Manager, I think, hears loud and clear that we want to look at some options.
Yep.
But we're not...
Not doing anything today.
Not doing anything.
Not securing this building.
Not today.
We're not securing this building today.
Correct. The item died, for lack of a second.
Okay.
All right. 9AY and AZ have presentations.
So Kenny Sutil is here, and is going to introduce, Kenny's with the Alliance for Economic Development, and will introduce these items that are adjustments on one of our TIF districts.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Kenny Sutil, the Alliance for Economic Development. I'm going to talk first about item 9Y, which is the proposed amendment to the Northeast Renaissance Project Plan, so the Northeast TIF District. Go ahead, Sarah. So today, what we're proposing are, there are three changes really to the project plan. We're proposing the creation of two new increment districts, one at 63rd and MLK, and one at Northeast 41st and Post Road. We're adding a new objective to the project plan, which is to encourage development and tourism activity in the Adventure District. And then there's also an administrative change that would allow OCEDT, the Economic Development Trust, to do some minor amendments, which is really something that was, is included in most of all the other TIF districts, but had, for some reason, had never been included in this one. So very quickly, just to remind you, a current map of the increment district of the Northeast Renaissance TIF, it's a very interesting layout, but mostly it covers the 23rd Street corridor, portions of MLK, but there's some other areas, so it's just a reminder. And so these are the two new increment districts that are proposed, and I do want to talk about the first one, Increment District D, and the item after this item, what we're going to hear from a group that has a project proposed here. So this is this one property, the southeast corner of Northeast 63rd and MLK. I will say, this is a little bit unique, and I'm going to go through this a little bit more in a slide later on the timeline, but this is a process we've been talking about for a while on this particular property, and it's a little bit unique in that this is a piece that goes into the Millwood School District, and Millwood being a school district that has such a small footprint geographically, there were some concerns raised to us by the community, and by the superintendent, and other stakeholders. And one of the things we worked through with folks was, let's create a shorter TIF district over here. So this one would be a seven-year Increment District D, so it would only be active for seven years from when we activate it, and that was done very intentionally. We worked with the developer, and the schools, and other stakeholders to figure out, how long could we do it to get this particular development to move forward, and get the assistance that it needs to move forward, but also trying to then get the taxes that are generated by the new development to get back into the school system and the other taxing jurisdiction as quickly as we can. So very unique, and I do want to say, normally, you know, we don't like to do shorter TIF districts, because we're looking at a bigger area, you know, more long-term strategic way of developing the area. I think this was just a special case, and I think it's a nice compromise here. The other increment district, E, that's proposed, is at Northeast 41st and Post. This is an area around the Filmmakers Ranch, and having discussions with them, they're in the process of acquiring some property and trying to expand some of their sound stages and other amenities out there. It's a really neat property. We don't have an actual project yet to bring forward on that, but this is setting the stage for that in the future. So those were the increment areas where the taxes would be generated and captured into the TIF district. So then if you recall, with tax increment financing districts, you have to have a project area, which is where the funds can be spent. So I'll start first on the right-hand side of your screen, on the one at 41st and Post, increment area is the same as the project area, so, and these are also part of the Northeast Renaissance TIF, so the other original project areas are in play there as well. But over on the left side, on the new Increment District D, we're expanding that project area up to Wilshire, Bryant, to MLK, and down to Grand, to make sure it covers the Millwood School District area, and it would give us the ability that if there are additional funds generated above and beyond what are needed for the developments, we could potentially do public projects in those areas. So when you amend a project plan, not only do you have to amend the maps, but you amend the budget. So for TIF District D, we're proposing a $2 million budget, a million and a half to go towards incentivizing, you know, retail and commercial development, and then we've sort of split the other $500,000, we think will be generated between public improvements and other public developments. So that's, that kind of the catch-all things that lets you do either, you know, city public improvements, or work with other taxing jurisdictions. On TIF E, it's a $9 million budget, again, $7 million going towards the commercial development, and a million to public improvements, and a million to other public developments. Again, I'll remind everyone, these are estimates that we have to make of what we think might be generated over the life of those increment districts, until actual things get built and money flows in there. There is no money in there today. So just a reminder, those are budgets. And then in the project plan, these were, you'll see kind of the bullet point list, those were the original planned objectives when the Northeast TIF District was created, so it's adding the one that says encourage development of destination retail and entertainment in Oklahoma City's Adventure District. The other one that we mentioned was just, again, adding language, under state law, TIFs can have some minor amendments that can be, normally when you do an amendment, it goes through the Planning Commission, the TIF Review Committee, the Economic Development Trust, the City Council, it takes months and months and months. We've had this administrative ability in other TIFs to do what are called minor amendments, where if it's, we need to do a small adjustment of a map, or a project area, or something like that, or a budget, you can do those up to 5%, and that's cumulative, so you can't do it like, I can't do 5% today, 5% tomorrow, 5%, it's, overall, the changes are cumulative. So this is, would be adding that language in that's on all the other TIF districts. So again, those are the three changes that we're proposing on the Northeast Ren, and then just very quickly, the next slide's the timeline, I believe. So I did want to point out, we've been having some discussions with the developer for a while, some discussion with stakeholders for a while. We did have a community meeting that I attended and did a presentation back in August at Millwood High School, and there were quite a few folks there. At that time, we were proposing a much larger TIF district to cover some additional areas in the Adventure District. You know, heard pretty loud and clear that that was not desired, that it wanted to be shrunk down, you know, right now, it was not desired, wanted to be shrunk down right now to this one particular property. We did have a Planning Commission meeting on October 10th, where it was approved, and then had TIF Review Committee on October 17th. There was, folks showed up and wanted to make some changes, and, you know, originally, we had a 25-year TIF proposed in that one, so we tabled everything, came back, you know, had some more discussions, came back on November 1st for another TIF Review Committee meeting with the compromise deal, went back to Planning Commission last week, and it's here today for introduction, and to be set for final hearing for December 3rd. So with that, be happy to answer any questions on the actual TIF changes. Okay, would you like for me to intro the next item?
Sure.
So, along those lines, so the next item, item AZ, is an actual plan, allocation of TIF, and this would be from, oh, also, I forgot to mention on the previous, it would activate TIF D. So TIF D, that part of, once it would be adopted, would activate TIF D. So item AZ is a joint resolution that will be also heard by the Economic Development Trust this afternoon, for an allocation not to exceed 1.5 million for a development, the Boomtown Adventure District development, which Andy Burnett is here and is going to give a short presentation on what this development is. Again, the way we structured this is, it would provide him, you know, 100% return of the ad valorem taxes generated until he hits that cap of a million and a half, so this was part of that compromise, that originally, when it was a longer-term TIF, we were going to have it be a much smaller percentage over time, but this is trying to, you know, get him to what he needs to make this development happen, and then, you know, turn the revenues back to the school district, et cetera. Now, there's a couple things, this would be contingent upon, obviously, council approving the project plan amendment, and it would also require him to do a minimum of $10 million of development on that site, Site D that we talked about. So with that, Andy, I believe, is here, is going to have him up and give a short presentation on what's contemplated here.
Good morning, Andy Burnett, excited to talk to you about the project. Could we go to the, yes, that slide, if we could just lock there, that'd be great. Been working on this idea for about three and a half years, was contacted by someone with USA Volleyball, and we looked at three different sites. One was in a different municipality, one was downtown by the river, and one was here. The idea is, you know, basically, fully developed around this volleyball concept, just under 100,000 square feet, 10 indoor hard courts, eight indoor sand courts, there are now seven outdoor sand courts. This development will host professional tournaments, amateur tournaments, kids leagues, adult leagues, rec leagues, really meant to try to grow the sport of volleyball. There's five other facilities like this in the country, and this will be the first one in this region. So with that development, the idea would be to come in and do a complementary pickleball development, which would be 16 indoor courts, four outdoor courts, a bar and restaurant will be inside of both the pickleball and the volleyball developments, and then hopefully, Phase Two would be this Starbucks and Donato's retail building there that you see closer to Martin Luther King Avenue. We would like to do a hotel as a part of this development, and then we've got one restaurant pad left on the corner. Anything else you want me to chat about? That's it.
Any questions?
Yes. So I am excited to see development in one of my favorite parts of town, Tintle Town, right across the street, it's my movie theater, since 98. Have you all given any thought to, in terms of the location of like, you have parking that is affronting Martin Luther King, right? Rather than making this a more transit-oriented development, I mean, you're about to have a bus rapid transit, I am to understand, from MAPS 4, right over here in this area, and so you're going to see, really, for the first time in a long time, people walking MLK, right? To say nothing of Millwood being up the road, you have Metro Tech up the road, I mean, people, I suspect over the next 10 years, you're going to see a lot more pedestrian traffic from that transit-oriented development. And one of the best practices we know from transit-oriented development is to, when there are sidewalks, right, that you kind of want the businesses... there are sidewalks, right, that you kind of want the businesses at the ground level running alongside those sidewalks. So like, for here, for instance, when I look at this, you see that out parcel there, that first out parcel facing MLK? You have all this parking in front of it. The best practice would say that you would want that building alongside the whatever new sidewalk infrastructure that's coming to that area. I would also remind everybody that coming near this area, right, is the Deep Fork Trail that's under construction right now. So can I, I guess my question is, is this set in stone in terms of the layout here? Is it possible that there can be a little bit more attention to thinking about how do you, how do you bring a best practice to what is going to be in our lifetimes, like very immediate lifetimes, a transit-oriented development route?
Always want to be a good listener. Nothing is set in stone. Well, I say that. Everything to the right of that pond, to the east of that pond, is set in stone. Everything to the west of that pond is malleable. We can, we would love to listen to great ideas, we'd love to meet with planning. What I do know is the volleyball facility on certain nights and weekends will bring north of 3,000 people from about a six-state range. And so we do need a lot of parking, and that's one of the reasons we chose this site, is the Chickasaw Nation has about 2,000 empty parking spots just south of the river. And so we do need a lot of parking. That being said, yeah, we're open to laying out that corner pad however everybody best sees fit.
That's wonderful to hear. And as you started talking, I am now remembering some of your own developments right here, right? And so you know what I'm talking about. You know it. You've done it. And now I'm asking you to bring that imagination to what we can do over there.
Absolutely.
I know you've done it, and I know you've done it well, and that I do not think that, I'm not asking to, in my mind, I would reduce parking, but I'm not going to do that. It's called compromise. So you say you need your parking, that's fine. I'm just asking that we bring a kind of best practice to Martin Luther King Avenue here in terms of where we're going to have buildings along.
Absolutely. We would love to do that. One thing that would dramatically help would be a bike path or a bridge from the Chickasaws over to our site. That's something we've talked with the city briefly about. It really enables us to do more with this site, and to your point, you know, push the buildings further up to the street. But we do have to, you know, today, people do still drive to this site specifically, and we do need the ability to park it.
Not going to fight you on that. We're having parking, let's go for it. I'm just asking for this other stuff. So how would we, how can we go about making sure that this is, let's get to work? How, because I want to hear more about what, if, does the Deep Fork Trail connect to you all? I'm looking at Director Miller right now, maybe, I don't know.
The Deep Fork actually turns south, right about Martin Luther King, right? Somebody in this room knows. Yeah. And so I think if there was a way to, you know, I know this is way above my pay grade, but somehow get us a bridge connecting that, those 2,000 parking spots that are being underutilized. I think it helps drive development further south, you know, into all of that unused land and parking that's there with the Chickasaws in Remington Park. And so I don't know what a bridge there costs, but can't be too much money.
Well, I guess my request, City Manager. It would be. Can't be too much money.
Gotta be, gotta be achievable.
Yeah. So I guess I would like to, once we figure out who the Ward Seven interim council member is, I'd like to maybe meet with them and Planning Hulk and Andy's team to talk about this design. Is that right?
Sure.
So that would be something.
I'm not telling you we've got any solution, but.
No, I don't know that we have solutions either with some of that other stuff, but I do know we can make.
Yes.
At least the stuff I'm talking about. And then I just want to hear some of his other stuff and find out what other projects are coming to there that we can make those connectivity, infrastructure improvements possible where we can. So yeah, if you can just get a meeting scheduled for us, once we get going, that'd be super helpful. Thank you for hearing that.
Absolutely.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Any other questions for Andy or Kenton? Okay. All right. Well, this is actually just being introduced today, and it's just on the consent docket, so we'll keep moving. Item BH has a presentation.
So David Todd, our director for the Maps Program, will give an introduction on this project, exciting project that's been coming for a while, and the final plans for the animal shelter.
Hey, good morning, David Todd, Maps Program Manager. Yes, this is a much anticipated, anticipated project, and we're happy to be bringing it to you today. Todd Edmonds is here from HSE Architects, and they are the architects for the project. And we're going to go through real quickly, show you what all's involved with this project.
Well, good morning, Mayor and Council. Pleased to be here this morning to present to you our final plans and specifications for the Maps Four Animal Shelter Project. I'll begin with looking at the site plan for the project. As most of you know, this site for this new animal shelter is on the same site as the existing facility. So all the elements shown there in gray have presented some challenges for us as we began looking at the location for the new facility. These are all structures, for the most part, that must remain during construction of the new facility. The large gray structure there is the existing facility that, again, has to remain during the construction, but it will be removed after the new building is built. There's also an existing pet cemetery in the middle of the site, as well as a Humane Society Building and an Oklahoma City Police Department Building at the far north end. And there's also, adding to those obstacles, there's also the challenge of a 19-foot change in grade across the site from the west side to the east side. And just to orient everyone, this, the street along the bottom is Southeast 29th Street. The street on the right is South Bryant, and then Grand Boulevard on the left or the west. So after an extensive site study, it was determined to locate the new building on the north end of the property between the existing facility and the Oklahoma City Police Department Building. So you can see there, here at the top of the slide, this is the proposed location for the new facility. This project will be built in two phases. So the main building here will be built in Phase One, and then after the shelter moves out of the existing facility into the new facility, we will proceed with Phase Two, which is removing the existing facility, which is in this general area, building a new barn, a new pasture, and then additional parking there as well. After the existing facility is removed, we do propose to leave the existing parking, which can be utilized for large adoption events when they have overflow traffic. But you can see here in this new site plan, where the pet cemetery here in the middle will remain undisturbed, as well as the Humane Society Building to the south, down here near 29th Street, and then the Oklahoma City Police Building on the far north end. So the building will face, this, this will be the face on the east side of the building will face Bryant Avenue, and that will be the main face of the building and the main entrance. And then everything to the left of that or west of that is where all the kennel facilities will be. As you, as you can see here, we've created these linear wings that are the kennel structures. So these, these wings are separated between the buildings, which accomplishes several things. It allowed us to step those wings up the site to help us to maneuver the change in grade. So each of those wings will step up the site 12 inches. And then it also provided an opportunity to have windows down each side of those kennel wings to provide natural light into each of those kennels, which is really important to the health of the animals in those kennels. And then it also created an opportunity to have play yards in between each of the kennels so that the animals can be taken out for exercise throughout the day. Here's a floor plan of the main building. So the entire facility, including a 2,700-square-foot barn, is just a little over 72,000 square feet. Also, to help fit the building on the site, we put about 9,500 square feet of administration space on a second floor. So this is looking at the first floor, and as I mentioned, the front of the building faces to the east or the left side of this plan. So in the upper left-hand corner, you can see a space labeled clinic. This will be the entrance for the clinic, which will have a treatment and surgery area. Below that is intake, and this is where the public would bring a stray or surrender animal. We have kennels there for both dogs and cats and wild animals. And then below intake is the large adoption lobby. This would be where you would come to adopt an animal. We have habitats there for both cats and dogs, and it's a very large lobby to accommodate large adoption events. And then below that is labeled training, and this is an area that can be used for dog training as well as staff meetings and other meetings in that space. And that, that wing there can be blocked off or locked off from the rest of the facility, and is somewhat self-sustaining with its own restrooms and catering area, and can be used by the general public after hours. So behind all those entry elements, we, there's a long north-south corridor here that is adoption, dog adoption area, and then everything to the left of that are those kennel wings that I mentioned. That's for dog and cat adoption. And then at the very far west end, we have a large storage room for food and other supplies, and then an intake area for the animal control officers that will bring in stray animals. So all of the animal habitats or kennels will be larger than the existing facility. And then we've also greatly increased the quantity of those kennels. So they currently have 246 dog kennels. In this facility, we'll have more than double at 546 dog kennels. Cat habitats are currently at 210. The new facility will have 317. So here's a look at the second floor administration area that I mentioned. So this will include the all administration offices, as well as animal control offices, and a large break room that will accommodate the entire building. Here's just a quick look at the new barn. It will have six large animal stalls, a drive-through for the drop-off of animals, storage rooms, and an area for poultry. Here's a look at the front of the building as you would enter in off of Bryant Avenue. And you can see here the four separate entrances that I mentioned, the clinic on the far right, intake next to that, the adoption entrance straight ahead, and then the training area entrance to the left. Here's just a shot looking at dusk with the underlit entry canopies. Then here is kind of a close-up of the adoption lobby. You can begin to see the materials in the, of the facility will be all long-lasting, low-maintenance facilities such as cast-in-place concrete, concrete block, cementitious siding, and lots of glass. Here's a look as you would walk into the adoption lobby. This is the only lobby that is a two-story lobby, so you can see just, as you would enter in, to the right are all the cat adoption condos. On the opposite side of the lobby would be the dog, dog adoption condos or habitats with a reception desk straight ahead. And then here you can see, as a two-story space, the administration area above has a glass wall that can look down into the adoption area with some frosted animals running across the glass. Lots of light with clerestory windows way up high, acoustical ceiling and wood trusses in this space. So we'll use durable surfaces throughout the entire facility. We only have two flooring materials, polished concrete and epoxy, no carpet anywhere, all very durable, cleanable surfaces. And we have incorporated some, bringing some nature into the space with some large concrete planters with plants, as well as biofilia mounted on the wall above the reception. This provides kind of a bringing nature into the space, as well as it provides an acoustic properties to help with potential barking and noise in the space. Here's just a look at the intake lobby. The clinic lobby would be very similar, again, very durable surfaces, polished concrete floors, wood look tile on the front of the reception, aluminum base, and then here you can see the acoustic ceiling material, as well as the exposed trusses. A typical treatment area has stainless steel cabinetry and polished concrete flooring, very durable, easy to maintain and clean. And then here's the typical adoption kennel, or a kennel wing that I mentioned with the glass down both sides, stainless steel kennels, painted concrete block, and polished concrete floors. So, and then also, mechanical systems in the space will be very robust with several zones throughout the facility. Each kennel will have its own separate mechanical zone to help reduce the spread of disease throughout the facility. Typical cat condominium. And then budget, the budget is just a little bit under $32 million for the entire project, and we are currently just almost $200,000 under budget. And then schedule, we're currently here at the review and presentation and approval stage in the process, and after approval, we will move on to bidding, which we're allowing 60 days. We anticipate that we will award the contract to a successful bidder just right after the first of the year, so January 2025. And then including both phases of construction, we anticipate the project to be completed in January of 2027. And with that, I'll address any questions you may have.
Why do we have to tear down the old one?
I'm sorry?
Why do we have to tear down our old building?
It's, it's just, well, one, because of the size of the site and finding a place for the building. The barn and the required parking and the pasture is currently right on top of where the existing building is.
Can we go back to Slide Two?
Yes, I think. Yeah, so the, the existing building goes all the way up to underneath this area where the barn and pasture and parking is.
And so down on 29th Street, or close to it in that corner, why would we have parking all the way down there?
That is the existing parking that we're proposing to leave, to be used as overflow parking. They have large adoption events on weekends where they have up to 1,500 people throughout a day, and a lot of times, they end up parking all along Grand Avenue because there's not enough parking in the, in the main parking lot. So here, we will actually, it's not shown here, but we will actually have a sidewalk that connects from that parking up to the new parking.
Is there a way to leave the?
I'm sorry?
Is there a way that we could leave our existing structure and utilize it as overflow considering the issues that we have with animals in this city?
Not, not with fitting the new building on there. We would have to reduce the size of the new building.
Or move parking over to the far-right corner?
On the far-right, that is, that is currently where our detention pond is. This site requires detention. That's a, that's a low area on the site that really isn't buildable. You're talking about right here?
I am.
Right. Yeah, we looked at that, putting the new building down there. Is that, we looked at that, that is one of the, one of the areas that we initially looked at putting the building, and there just wasn't enough land there to fit the building. And not affect all the utilities that cross the site that serve the existing facility and the Humane Society. There are utilities that cross, cross the site here from east to west, as well as north to south.
Okay. Nice work. This looks great. However, kind of building on the councilman's question, because we do have these issues, you know, of overflow, right? One of the best pieces of news I had heard from outgoing Director Wickenkamp about a year ago, I don't think it was this budget, was it this budget or last budget? We talked about hiring a consultant to help us study. It was this one? So, yeah, so where, do we have an update on where we are in terms of, again, for those of you who aren't caught up, my understanding of the problem, right, is we have too many, you know, stray animals that are not spayed or neutered. We have too few workers to be able to go out to respond to those different colonies that can come into existence of, you know, they're not spayed and neutered, so this cycle continues. We had one in my own, you know, neighborhood in Paseo that it took us several years to catch them cage by cage, cat by cat, and now we're on the very last generation of that. And then Wickenkamp was able to get out by Harlow where there were just dozens of these cats, and they were able to get them spayed and neutered. And I reached out to one of the residents over there, and he's like, James, it is night and day now. It's just a complete different. So getting those workers out there to respond proactively to spay and neutering these animals, right, that is going to help reduce the demand in this facility, right? It's the facility needed to be expanded, right? The way you described, at the same time, there has to be these workers going out there. Where are we at with that?
So we're still working on defining the scope of the project with the consultant to go back with an RFP to bring a consultant in.
Okay. Just wanted everyone to know that that was the thing, and I just really appreciate John's work on that and just everybody, because I just think it's very important work. And it's important for everyone to know, this was not the work when they built this facility back in the 90s. They did not care about whether these animals lived or died. I really want everyone to remember that. They didn't build this facility with that in mind. We are building this facility with that in mind. We did not think about the workers going out to do the work I described until just this very moment, so that's called progress.
Thanks, Todd.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay. Well, if there's no further questions on that item, we are now ready to consider the entire consent docket, save the item that was previously struck and the item that previously died for lack of a second. So we could take a motion now. There we go. Got a motion and a second. Is anybody?
Desire.
Okay, all right. I figured the desire was there. Okay, there we go. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, now we're on item 10, the concurrence docket. We have items A through Q we can take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, now we're on item 11, items for individual consideration. Item A is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval rezoning 1416 East Reno Avenue from R1 to I3. We previously discussed the situation here. I think being the only one up here who represents the people of Ward 7, I will call up the applicant to explain what's going on here.
Good morning. Neely Cook from Hartzog-Hunger-Keson at 201 Robert S. Kerr. I am here on behalf of my client 1400 East Reno LLC who owns the property at 1416 East Reno. They are simply seeking rezoning from R1 single-family to I3 heavy industrial district. The goal with this is that they are simply running out of room on their current property where they're storing their water pipes. So all they need to use that lot for is to store water pipes and to construct a road to allow for a separate exit point. Right now, trucks are having a hard time getting in and out of the current property, and it causes a huge traffic backup on Reno. So the goal with building the road entering onto 1418 and exiting on 1416 would be to alleviate the truck traffic and solve the problem. And also, the actual property owner, my client, is he or she flew up from Houston, and she would like to say a few things and answer any questions that y'all might have.
Good morning. I'm Stacy Minchin. As Neely said, I'm with 1400 East Reno LLC. So just to give you a little bit of backstory on this one-acre piece and the need to have this rezoned I3 Advanced Drainage Systems is a company who moved into Oklahoma City in 2006, and they have occupied the property immediately to the east of this. Since that time, they've been an excellent tenant. They keep a very neat, clean, quiet piece of property. They've been an excellent employer and an Oklahoma taxpayer since '06. As their business has expanded, they have outgrown their space and need to incorporate this one to accommodate their needs. So as Neely said, the plans to gravel this one acre for additional storage and to create a drive so that they have one entrance and one exit to help with the traffic flow. So this entire one-mile stretch of East Reno is heavy industrial. I think back in the early to mid-1900s, perhaps this was a residential district which changed to industrial. Somehow this one-acre piece got left behind, so this would make it in conformance with the rest of the one-mile stretch of land that is there, so.
No, I mean, that's a very correct observation. I was kind of surprised to find anything would be R1 in such an industrial area, and as you can see from the zoning map here, it is certainly surrounded by I3. I do have a question for Jeff Butler. Would you, you're gonna have to answer it, so I'm gonna ask you. Did anyone protest at Planning Commission?
No, no protest.
All right, and this, did this pass unanimously at Planning Commission?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
I would say one thing, I looked at it last night, and staff approved it, Planning Commission approved it. There were no protests, and like you said, if you look at the map, there's a steel company, the storage facility, a scrapyard, oil wells, I3 all around this, so the residential does not make sense.
Yeah. In fact, if somebody tried to put the residential there, we would probably urge them strongly not to do that because we would have inevitable complaints about their neighbors, so. Any other questions for the applicant?
If you need a motion, I'll make it at this time.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 11B is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval rezoning 11701 North Sarah from PUD 789 to R2. Councilman Carter, no one has signed up to speak.
After talking with the applicant and looking over this and staff recommending it for approval, I will as well.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, 11C is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval rezoning 8901 South Anderson Road from AA and AE2 to PUD 2006 and AE2. Councilman, and this item has been deferred a few times, and Councilman Stone, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. I know it's been deferred a few times, but I can tell you, I've spent hours talking to the developer along with hours talking to constituents out there that have some concerns, and I did discuss this with Mr. Box. I would go ahead and make a motion that we defer this to December 17th.
Sounds like a heavy zoning docket on December 17th is brewing. Okay, we got a motion to defer this item to December 17th. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Deferral passes unanimously. Okay, item D was previously deferred to December 17th. Item E was previously deferred to December 17th. Item F was previously deferred to December 17th. Item G was previously deferred to December 17th, which brings us to item H, an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for, well, we'll skip that for a moment, and we'll return to that, and we'll start with item I, an ordinance on final hearing rezoning 7900 North MacArthur from SPD 79 to SPD 1663. 79, that's a very early SPD. Councilman Carter, no one has signed up to speak.
So subject to the summary text, and I'm good with it as well.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item J was previously struck, and Councilman Cooper, we skipped you a moment ago. I'll give you a moment to settle, but by speaking slowly, but I would love to call upon you for item 11H, which is an ordinance on final hearing rezoning 2416 Northwestern from NC, UD, and TT to SPD 1662. No one has signed up to speak.
Is the applicant here, though? Do you want to come up and tell us a little bit about what you're doing, and we can talk about what we discussed, please?
My name is Daniel Dalton. I'm with Rolox Studio, 1141 West Sheridan, on behalf of Millu LLC. So my client bought this lot about four years ago, and then COVID hit, but there was a restaurant sitting on it on the back half. It had caught on fire. It was in very poor shape. They tore it down. We started digging into it and found out the setback off the center line of Western is 75 feet, and since there's a residential property to the east, the setback is currently 15 feet, leaving us something like a negative 12-foot of lot to develop. So unless there's a black hole in there somewhere, we can't really build anything. So what we're asking for is the zoning change to lessen the setbacks and allow our clients to build a grab-and-go restaurant on the site.
Thank you. And then I had, we met and talked, and do you happen to have some of the, you had emailed me some of the responses to those?
Yes, so James and I talked about pedestrian connectivity we got with traffic. They are planning a new sidewalk along O'Reilly's West property line, and then that continues along our property line. I was told it was going to start in three weeks. That was three weeks ago, but it has not started, and I think the weather may have something to do with that. There's going to be a pedestrian crossing directly across 24th, and then there's going to be one from the south side of 24th to the west side of Western. So that's how the city anticipates people coming to this restaurant. There is some street parking already at 45 angles on either side of Western. James, I don't think we can get the crossing directly across Western where you'd like it. I just, traffic doesn't seem to be on board with that.
Okay, well, let's talk positives. So, so if I'm hearing this right, so also keep in mind, a streetscape's coming, right, to 23rd Street that's gonna be improving the pedestrian connectivity there. So people would be able to walk off 23rd Street here onto a, the planning directors here, correct, sip, we're wrong, onto a newly constructed sidewalk on Western where O'Reilly's is right now. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, there's gonna be a sidewalk constructed along the east.
And that'll connect?
Side of Western, yeah.
And that'll connect to the rendering we just saw with the sidewalk infrastructure you're doing? Yes.
Yeah, so actually, that sidewalk will now on the west side be placed by the city, and then we will update this plan once we get it resurveyed and figure out exactly where it is.
Okay.
Part of this spud is we still have to go through Urban Design Commission, so we're gonna have to modify these documents, get everything updated. This is actually the outdated exhibit as well. There should be a newer one where the setback is, there it is, showing the building closer to the street.
My concern is actually with 24th and 25th, if you can just keep that up there for us. Thank you. So I do not understand traffic's pushback here. So I just want to be very clear. This 25th Street is the route I walk or bike or drive to work at OCU. Like, I leave this neighborhood at that intersection at 25th. People try and cross 25th all the time using similar modes of transportation. My ask at 24th and 25th is for crosswalks, a square of crosswalks. I don't understand why that would be difficult, especially when we have a development, a small business that has already seen, you know, cost added on them from the pandemic delay, that we could be creating foot traffic that's safely crossing here. When the Asian night market happens, I'm glad this image is up here, when the Asian night market happens, if you see where Military Avenue is right there and where Klassen is, the church's parking lot is just full of parked cars. People are walking from Military, from Klassen, on 25th, on 24th, and there are just no crosswalks there at all. And those crosswalks, by the way, are about to be, oh, sorry, the sidewalks we're putting in are about to become ADA compliant. That means that people with a wheelchair are going to see those sidewalks, they're gonna see those sidewalks, or people with any sort of disabilities are gonna see those sidewalks, and they're gonna think, oh, I can safely connect from one side of the street to the other. But there will be no crosswalk allowing them safe travel in a wheelchair across the street. I take this to be deeply concerning because in my ward, as you recall, I've told this council, someone trying to cross Portland in a wheelchair, three different cars hit them and killed them in a hit-and-run just last year. So I'm just curious, what can we be doing? It seems like a planning best practice that we're putting in the sidewalk connectivity. We have a small business that's going in right there. What can I be doing as the council member to get some crosswalks at 24th and 25th? I just think it's gonna help your development. It's gonna increase safety, and I don't think you're against it.
No, no disagreement at all. We would love a signalized intersection there.
All right.
I don't, I don't think it's, you know, within my client's budget to pay for these public improvements, though.
Sure. I'm not even asking for a signalized intersection, and that's the disagreement. Traffic will tell you that they don't feel comfortable putting in crosswalks unless it's a signalized intersection. Well, we should ask traffic, the traffic commission as I have, about the backlog, the backlog of trying to add signalized intersections that have already been approved, and so we would be waiting till the cows come home for that to happen. I'm not asking for a signalized intersection. I am asking for four, like a square crosswalk painted. That is what I am asking for. I'm asking for it once at 24th, and I'm asking for it again at 25th. That sort of paint signifies, signals to people how to use that intersection, how to get to this gentleman's business that I would like to approve for development. So the holdup is our, is traffic just being like, well, I don't know, we need to put a traffic signal in. It's like a lot of money, I think as much as like a million dollars to be able to do something like that. The small business should not be asked to do that, and I don't know that we have the city coppers to do it, and we have a backlog, so what are our options here? I'm asking for paint.
I think we need to step back with traffic and find out exactly what the issues are and assess that.
Okay.
I haven't been involved in the conversation on this, so I don't know what all the issues or what other concerns are.
Councilman?
I want to be a part of that meeting, too.
Would you say why?
Well, I want to.
I'm happy to have you, but.
I want to get across May to Early Wine Park, and all I want is some lines in the street and a yellow sign, so, but yeah, I get it, so.
Yeah, yeah. I just want everyone to know, this is the bureaucracy holding us up, is that the traffic mindset is you have to have this nearly million-dollar traffic signal there, and I do not think you do. I do not think you need that at all. In the Paseo streetscape, we put in crosswalks at 28th and Paseo. There is no light there. There's no stop sign there. There's no stop sign there. Like, we've just got to be more inventive for the safety of our people and so that these small businesses that are coming into existence that are trying to serve people on foot can thrive and do so safely. So what meeting do I have to have with Councilman Hinkle and staff to get this going? Because this, this has bugged me for five years.
We'll get that set up.
Thank you. I have faith we're going to approve this for you right now.
Thanks for helping bring attention to this area.
Thanks for helping bring attention to this area, and I'll move for approval.
We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you, okay. Wait, which item was that? Okay. All right, we already did I, J has been struck, and so we're on K. This is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval, rezoning 6901 South Main Street from AA to SPD 1668. Councilwoman Peck, no one has signed up to speak.
Okay, seeing no protests at Planning Commission and recognizing the technical evaluations that were added by staff, we'll move for approval.
We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item L is an ordinance on final hearing. This relates to our personnel and retirement systems. We were briefed a couple of meetings ago, had a public hearing today. Is final consideration if that's the council's desire. We could take a motion on the ordinance. We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item M is an ordinance to be introduced today, set for public hearing on December 3rd and final hearing in December 17th. And we have a presentation.
Lisa Cronister, I'm sorry.
Lisa Cronister with the Planning Department, our Assistant Planning Director, is going to introduce this item and really affect M and N.
Yes, good morning. Lisa Cronister, Assistant Planning Director. And my presentation will cover both items M and N. So I'm here to present to you proposed updates to the home sharing ordinance. This was a huge team effort. And I'm grateful for my colleagues in the Municipal Counselor's Office, Development Services, and Planning Department for their efforts. Next. The current regulations were adopted in 2019 and included amendments to both chapters 13 and 59. Chapter 13 required a license for all home shares and set grounds for revocation of the license. Chapter 59 defined home share as a use that does not exceed a 30-day stay. It also required that non-host-occupied home shares or home shares located in historic preservation zoning districts obtain a special exception from the Board of Adjustment. Planning Department was asked by the City Manager's Office to convene focus groups with residents, home sharing hosts and operators, Board of Adjustment members, Board of Adjustment members and city staff to discuss concerns regarding home shares that require a special exception and how these concerns might be addressed. The results of this process were proposed ordinance changes to both chapters 13 and 59. The proposed ordinances were introduced at City Council on June 18th, 2024, where they were referred back to Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment for their recommendations. Both bodies held multiple public hearings to discuss the ordinance and recommended various additional changes. These changes have been incorporated into the ordinance text, which is now being brought back to council. Planning Commission recommended that the term "home sharing" be changed to "home sharing slash short-term rental" to more accurately reflect the fact that the existing ordinance allowed short-term rentals for properties where the host did not live on the property. Various stakeholders asked how a record of previous violations could be considered in evaluating renewal applications. They also asked for stronger consequences for hosts who violate ordinances or conditions. This ordinance change would specify that the Board of Adjustment, in the case of special exception applications and licensing, licensing staff for all other home shares have the discretion to deny the application for one year based on a record of citations or convictions. Chapter 13 changes would impact all home shares, both host-occupied and non-host-occupied. These changes include adding a definition of primary residence and clarifying how applicants would provide proof of their application. This change would help staff better determine if the property proposed for home sharing is truly the primary residence of the host. This change would also set a maximum occupancy limit between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. This limit would be the number of bedrooms times two plus two additional occupants, not to exceed 16 occupants. The goal of this change is to limit noise from parties and other gatherings during the overnight hours by limiting the number of occupants. Other proposed changes to chapter, chapter 13 include clarifying that the approval of a home sharing license does not invalidate any restrictive covenant, deed restrictions, or lease agreements on the property that restrict home sharing. The host or applicant, not staff, would be responsible for verifying that there are not any such restrictions. Also, the Board of Adjustment believed that if a host was renting their proper, their primary residence as a short-term rental for more than 10 nights in a calendar month, then the residence should no longer be considered the primary residence. Therefore, with this change, the host would be required to follow the approval process for non-host-occupied home shares. That is, the host must obtain a special exception. Chapter 59 changes apply only to home shares that require a special exception, that is, non-host-occupied home shares and home shares in historic preservation districts. These changes include clarifying the process for revocation of a special exception, mirroring the language from chapter 13 requiring a special exception if the host-occupied home share is rented for more than 10 nights in a calendar month, clarifying the location and host requirements for home shares in historic preservation districts, reducing the maximum term for a home sharing special exception from 10 years to three years, clarifying when an application is considered a renewal and when it is considered a new application, and specifying a minimum stay of two nights with the goal of promoting neighborhood stability by reducing the turnover rate of guests. Additional chapter 59 changes include limiting the number of home share, home sharing special exceptions to not exceed 10% of the dwellings on any given block, again, with the goal of promoting neighborhood stability by limiting the number of home shares on a block that are not the primary residence of a host. Also, setting an onsite parking requirement of one space for every four occupants and authorizing the board to consider restrictive covenants, deed restrictions, or lease agreements that prohibit home sharing or short-term rentals in their decisions. Note that these last three items apply only to new special exception home share applications and not to applications for the renewal of special exceptions. The Board of Adjustment recommended one change that staff did not agree with, and therefore it has not been included in the ordinance before you today. The Board recommended requiring a homestead exemption as proof of primary residency. However, primary residents who rent and want to home share their property with the consent of the property owner would not be able to provide a homestead exemption because homestead exemptions can only be obtained by property owners. This could result in equal protection concerns for renters. The ordinance amendment as drafted does contain more stringent requirements for proof of residency than the current ordinance and therefore should help better verify when the property is the primary residence of the host. Throughout our outreach to identify the proposed ordinance changes, we heard repeated concerns about how the existing ordinance was enforced and how complaints were addressed. The City Manager's Office has worked with the Office of Innovation to create a request for proposals for consultant support that will address these concerns, including identifying unlicensed home shares, assisting with outreach to those unlicensed home shares, including licenses that are about to expire or recently lapsed, assisting with oversight of hotel tax obligations, creating documentation for licensing violations, providing a 24-hour complaint platform, and coordinating with the city's licensing and code enforcement database. The RFP is expected to be posted next month. So we are asking council to set the ordinance for a public hearing on December 3rd and adoption on December 17th. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
I just have one comment. The Oklahoma City Metropolitan Associations of Realtors asked me to meet with them to discuss what we're looking at today. And I was able to receive an email from Gary Jones with some comments and thoughts about what is being presented. And I hope everybody, I asked Debbie Martin to share this with everybody on the council. I hope everybody will take the time to read this and think about it. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So as stated, this is just introduction today. So we could take a motion on that. And we'll start with item M. We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And item N, which is related, same story. Introduction today, public hearing December 3rd, final hearing December 17th. We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item 11O is an ordinance to be introduced, set for public hearing today, I'm sorry, December 3rd and final hearing December 17th, relating to the general schedule of fees, especially relevant to parks, recreation, and cultural affairs. And there's a presentation.
Yes, Melinda McMillan Miller, our Parks and Recreation Director, will give us a presentation on the proposed changes.
Yes, thank you very much, Melinda McMillan Miller, Parks and Recreation Director. Today, we're introducing changes to chapter, sorry, to chapter 60. Yes, chapter 60, title, yeah, title 38, for all the park ordinance and ordinances that we currently have in the program. Those have not changed since 1980. It's been a very long time since we've been able to change our practices and modernize our system overall as a whole to be able to evaluate how facilities have fees charged for their use, how parklands are also treated with reservations and permit fees. And then also giving the department the flexibility for how we charge for classes and programs in order to really analyze and have the best cost recovery models and also best business practices to be able to support the decisions that are made for how the department conducts business, how we charge fees or do not charge fees for low-cost programs to zero-cost programs, to those programs that have a higher cost and are more specific to a singular person's benefit. So all of those things together really created a deep dive with our park commission into evaluating how this ordinance is structured and how we wish to change it and modify it. So before you were introducing that, hopefully from the briefing paper you all had received and various conversations I've had with most of you throughout this process, I'm happy to answer any questions and hope you take the introduction of it today and then add it for consideration, public comment, and then adoption in December.
Thank you, Melinda.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's take up a motion then to introduce the proposed ordinance, item 01. And then we'll address 02. We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And now 02, this is a resolution to be introduced, set for public hearing December 3rd and final consideration December 17th, establishing rental and admission fees for park facilities. We have a motion and possibly a second. Yes, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item P is the public hearing regarding the only dilapidated structure left, item 1B. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, and so we will advance to the resolution found at P2, declaring that the structure is dilapidated. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Can I ask about, so that's for item P, and it's C, right? That'd be the 4201.
C was struck.
That was struck?
At the beginning of the meeting.
Okay. At some point, I'd like to talk with you all about these apartment buildings. I have a student who reached out to me recently about just some issues that are happening there. So, yeah, I want to say that.
And are you saying you want to talk to staff about that?
Yeah, I do, I do. Thank you.
Okay, item Q is a public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed. And we do have someone who's signed up to speak on I, 1626 Southeast 40th, and that is Barbara Perry.
Hello, thank you, council. And forgive me, I'm a little frustrated. I live right next door to this property. And since they ceased operation, no one has come back to care for the property. If the weeds were my problem, I could deal with that. I could mow it myself. But immediately, the thieves came and stole everything that's possible to steal in there. And then came the transients and the homeless and, and all that that breeds. And right now, my property, I am 20, it's a, it's a small road. They not only live inside the property, but they're right along the public road. My property easement is 20 feet from this. There's trash, it's toxic, there's people all hours of the night. I don't feel safe. And I don't know what else to do about it. They don't seem to care. I do have a heart for the homeless. I don't know what that answer is. I know we've got great resources that we've put in place for it. You can't make anybody do that. I don't know if a regulated homeless camp is, not everybody wants housing in the traditional sense that you and I do. I just know that my rights are, I don't feel safe in my own place. And they've done nothing to secure the property. There, it is just, it breeds people dumping out trash. It, it looks like when somebody doesn't care for something, nobody else cares for something to an extent. People throw out mattresses, tires, and more and more people are coming. It's getting bigger and bigger, especially with the Senate bill that we had passed, which is great that the governor signed. But now it just makes it where they're not on state property, they're going to the private sector. Anyway, if there's something you can do, I don't know what else to do anymore. I appreciate your time.
I appreciate your time and thank you for coming up here and sharing your thoughts on that.
Thank you.
Heather, I'm sorry, I didn't know I was supposed to sign up to talk. But I'm Ryan Sheets. I represent the plaintiff that is foreclosing on this property.
And this is relative to the same address, the same item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, got it.
So I represent the plaintiff, First National Bank of McGregor. We went out there last week to try and have the property secured with our contractor. And at that time, that's when we found out that there were homeless on the property. And our contractors are not willing to kick out the homeless. They are worried for their safety. As she said, it looks scary, as the contractor described it. So we worked with Chris Smith on Thursday. He's the code inspector. He told us not to use the police to clear them out. So we told our contractors not to come back out on Friday when we were scheduled again to clear out the homeless. And then I spoke with Mr. Davidson this morning, and he told us to use the sheriff to clear out the homeless. So we're getting kind of mixed signals from the city. So we're asking for just a one-week deferment so that we can get this fixed. And if we can get some coordination with the city on how they want us to clear out the homeless, we want to move this property just as fast as everybody else. Thank you.
I just want to be clear on one point. If a trespass complaint is filed by a private citizen, our city will act. Our city police will act. Once that's signed.
That's all we need. So can I get that today? Because truly, we would love to do that.
If you'll work with Chad, we'll help you.
Chad?
Is this the paperwork? Is this the paperwork?
Chad Davidson, Code Enforcement Superintendent. One of the things that may propose a problem for our police department is he works for the lien holder, not necessarily the owner of the property.
Property owner.
And I'm not sure that the police will remove somebody.
So we may have to have the property owner.
The property's in foreclosure, and he works for that lien holder, so that might be a problem.
Since we're foreclosing on the property, the property owner's not necessarily kind to work with us.
Let's talk with Chad, and let's work with the police department to see what we can do, because we may be able to, I don't know if we'll be able to contact the owner on that and try to get that.
We sent them notice, they haven't replied.
Okay.
Yeah, the owner of record, like I said, they're in foreclosure, they probably won't reply to anything that we have.
Okay.
The only office we've talked to is this gentleman's.
Let us work with you to try to help you get something resolved. It is a bit of a legal challenge for us, but we'll work with you so we can get done.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
To be clear, we're not going to defer this item, but you can continue to work with Chad and try and get that addressed.
And I spoke with Chad today, he told me that there's a risk of fire when there's homeless people in it, and I totally understand. I appreciate y'all working with us, though.
Always is, isn't there? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no one else has signed up to speak under this public hearing, and so we will move to Q2, the resolution declaring that the structures are unsecured, save for the one previously struck. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, R1 is a public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed, and just for situational awareness, is that same item on here? It is, okay, but I think we've already addressed it, so. Has anyone else signed up to speak, Amy?
No, they haven't.
They have not, and so we will advance to R2, the resolution declaring that the buildings are abandoned, save for those previously struck. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item S is a resolution providing for the approval and adoption of both the amended and restated money purchase plan and trust open plan, et cetera, and we have a presentation. Mr. City Manager.
Yes. Gina Jordan is the, our manager of our retirement system, and she'll give us a presentation on this change that's being proposed in our deferred compensation program.
Good morning. My name is Gina Jordan. I am the Retirement System Manager. Earlier today, we did pass the ordinance with some name changes for some of the retirement plans, and so as part of that, we are also needing to amend and restate the plan documents for the money purchase plans to follow what the ordinance names are now. So we're removing some of the plan numbers that were tied to the previous record keeper, naming it such as Money Purchase Plan Open or Money Purchase Plan Closed, rather than having the specific account numbers. We are also adopting and restating the 457 plan, needing to merge the plan from Mission Square and Nationwide into one plan document, and so that is taking place. And so what this is, is a resolution requesting approval for the mayor or city manager to be able to sign the documents that we're needing. We need the documents effective December 18th in order to make the transfers to the new carrier, which is Voya, and then we'll come back at the end of December and provide the ratified documents, so everybody can still see those. Another part of this resolution is to take formal action, declaring how we're handling the employee contributions to be a pickup for the employer. It has to do with Internal Revenue Code and with them being pre-tax dollars and not being able to take them out. The employer has to pick them up to send them to the carrier, and they don't ever touch the employee's hands at that point. So with that, I can answer any other questions.
Thank you, Gina. This is really continued work that we've been doing with our new deferred comp board, trying to lead this and get this coordinated and making sure it's transitioning some change, so there's some pain points with it, but I think at the end of the day, we'll have a better product ultimately, have a better result for our employees, our retirees. So I appreciate the leadership and the work that's being done on this.
Thank you.
All right, well, we're going to take a motion on item S. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item 11T1 is a resolution authorizing the municipal council to confess judgment without admission of liability in the case of Thompson &amp; Hill as administrators of the estate of Edwards v. DeRoy, Holman, and the City of OKC. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item U1 is a resolution authorizing the municipal council to confess judgment without admission of liability in the case of Reese v. City of OKC. Staff is not requesting executive session. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item V1 is a resolution authorizing the municipal council to confess judgment without admission of liability in the case of Reader &amp; Classen v. City of OKC. Staff is not requesting executive session. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. W1 is a resolution authorizing the director of the municipal council to negotiate a legal service contract for the purpose of litigating no-cost taxpayers to recover over charges for insulin. Staff would like an executive session, and so I would propose we vote on W2 and then handle that at the end of our other business, and then come back potentially for the resolution. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will handle executive session at the end of our other business and then return for that resolution. 11X1, our claims recommended for approval. Staff has not requested executive session. We can handle the claims a three with one motion. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And now we are at item 12, comments from council. Ward 1.
I hope everyone has an amazing Thanksgiving next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Ward 2. Oh, away. Congratulations, Bradley Carter, just joined the Board of Directors for the National League of Cities as of this weekend, and we have a long history with the League of Cities, which included the Ward 2 council member, Mark Schwartz, serving as the president of that organization some decades ago, and of course, they celebrated their centennial this weekend, and we've been a member, I assume, from day one, if not very close to it, and again, thank you for representing us there. Big deal. Ward 2.
Just passing the baton. Just wanted to invite folk tonight to a Ward 2 meetup at Oklahoma City University, where we're going to talk about what our infrastructure needs in the Ward are. This is going to be from 5:30 to 7:30 PM inside the Tom &amp; Brendan McDaniel University Center, and that's at 2501 North Blackwelder. Already, I'm grateful, City Manager Freeman's going to be joining us tonight to kind of lay out how the bond process works. This is also going to be an opportunity to learn about what projects the 2017 bond and 27-month extension of MAPS 3 sales tax, like what that brought to the Ward, what MAPS 4 is bringing to the Ward. Learn a little bit more about Key to Home as well. So we're going to do that for about the first 20, 30 minutes, just an introduction, and then for the next hour and a half, residents can go table by table by table and talk department by department by department to share what the gaps are from the last bond maps in this current moment. So just want to say thank you to staff for bringing this together, and look forward to seeing everyone tonight at OCU. Thank you.
Thank you, Ward 3. Ward 4. Ward 5. Ward 8.
I just wanted to echo your comments, Mayor. On Saturday, we learned that Bradley got a two-year term on the National League of Cities Board of Directors. I know that you and Amy prayed about this. I know that you've thought a lot about it. You keep putting more and more on your plate, but I know you're going to do a great job in speaking for Oklahoma City and all the towns and cities in the state of Oklahoma, so congratulations, my friend.
All right, now we're at citizens to be heard, and we have a few. This is item 13. Louis Johnson. And if everybody would state their name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Louis Johnson. I live at 2257 Northwest 36th Street. I am here to comment about the brutality of the Oklahoma City Police Department and the repercussions that has had in my own life. I have 10 things I would like to say. One, an upset elderly man pointing the finger to a chest of an able-bodied adult poses no threat. Two, a traffic collision is a highly-charged situation with fight-or-flight hormones running rampant, possible injuries to people's bodies, and damage to property. This is a time when emotions are running hot, and a de-escalating force is required. Three, paying taxes makes me complicit. My money equals my sin. Five, while I am disgusted and heartsick and full of rage over this latest publicized example of police brutality, I am not surprised. I don't know anyone who is surprised. This is the type of behavior we have come to expect from our police department. Five, the trust in the police department is so eroded that only radical change will address that, but at a minimum, there needs to be accountability for the officer and the culture that repeatedly produces this type of behavior. Six, we do not call the cops when we need their help because we fear, at best, they will make matters worse, and at worst, someone will die. I do not call the cops when I need their help. Seven, I did not call the cops when I was in a violent and abusive marriage. When I called 911, I said things to make sure the paramedics responded. I filed a VPO, which was granted ex parte on emergency, rather than filing a police report. This course of action likely prevented me from being killed. However, my husband will face very few legal consequences since I was too afraid of the police to involve them at any point, and the choice not to call the cops when my husband was particularly violent also could have resulted in my death. Eight, when an OKCPD officer came with my husband while the VPO was active, the officer told me it was not his job to enforce the VPO, rather to keep us from fighting, and the officer intentionally let my service dog into the street. I did not feel comfortable filing a complaint because I was afraid, due to a good old boys' club mentality.
30 seconds remaining.
That I would receive even shittier enforcement of my VPO had I done so. Nine, I think our taxes should pay for the police to help, not hurt so much that people are afraid to call them when they really need their help. 10, I want to apologize to my neighbor, I want to say that I'm so sorry, but it's not a real apology because I'm not going to change my behavior, nothing is going to change. The next act of brutality will be paid for with my taxes. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Don Lacy, 6004 Southeast 56th Court. I'm here to speak about the bike route that is ongoing, I guess. I just found out about the issue in the last week, and I was just wanting to know if there was any public, this is between Southeast, on Southeast 59th Street, between Air Depot and Eastern Avenue, I believe. And I was just trying to figure out why I wasn't informed as a resident of that area. It's going to directly affect our access to Southeast 59th Street, and I live in a neighborhood with about 100 homes, and especially in the rush hour traffic and so forth, it's going to be a difficult thing for access to our neighborhood. And so dedicating a whole lane of traffic, where it's a four-lane road, and one lane is going to be committed to the bike route, and that's going to take away a westbound lane for the citizens of the area there to be able to get around with their motorized traffic, and so I'm concerned about that. I wanted to know if there was a public notification to residents and businesses affected by this major change in the traffic flow. Also, were there studies done to confirm traffic flow in this Southeast 59th route between Air Depot and Eastern Avenue? If so, I'd like to see those. I'd like to know who voted for this proposal on the council, and maybe how long ago this became a, you know, started up, this issue has begun. I feel like the greater public good is better served by leaving the status quo for the traffic flow in that area for all businesses and residents involved. And we're basically, it sounds like we're going to be making, you know, special consideration for bikers, which I'm not opposed to bikers, bicyclists, but the general flow of traffic is, the way that it's always been done, is bicyclists run with the traffic, both going and coming, eastbound and westbound, and I don't see any reason why that couldn't continue.
30 seconds remaining.
Okay. I think another friend, neighbor, might be giving some solution points, but it's going to create a big backup at Southeast 59th Street and Sooner during the rush hour traffic, especially between 3:00 and 6:00 PM, and also then the morning traffic between 6:45 and 8:45. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up and speaking. I will follow up with you after this meeting, so I'll reach out to you, and we'll have that, I'll be able to answer those questions for you. Okay, thank you.
And I think on the same topic, Larry Hopper.
What's his name again? I've never heard of him.
You know, you're probably going to think this is odd, that Larry Hopper, a guy who's all about public transit, complete streets and trails, is going to have concerns about this innovative cycle track on 59th, but I do, okay? And one little footnote, you may not know it, but this is off the subject. The ULI magazine features Oklahoma City as the cover picture and a lot of stories about the 95 Murrah bombing and all that. I really encourage you to read it, and some really great kudos to Mayor Cornetter in there. So back to this. My name's Larry Hopper, I live in Ward 4, 6008, Southeast 56th Court, and I was and still get paid sometimes to do active transportation consulting, and about a week and a half ago, one of our neighbors, Glenn Lewis, appears on my driveway and says, "Larry, what's going on on 59th?" And as I listened to him, I understood his point, and basically it's that, you know, the city is going to remove two of the four lanes of traffic that are through traffic on Southeast 59th, and it really probably will have some major impacts from Sooner Road to about 1,000 feet east. It's a four-mile cycle track, as best I can tell, and for the most part, shouldn't really create traffic issues, but because of the advent of Boeing and Northrop, you know, being a little bit half a mile east of our house, the new Amazon distribution center, we see a lot more traffic on 59th than we ever did to Sooner, west of Sooner, probably not much of an issue because there aren't those large traffic generators, okay? So, yeah, I listened to Glenn, and I thought, hmm. I had to tell him I was in favor of it. I don't think they're going to run me out of the neighborhood, but they might, you know? But basically, the way a cycle track works is next to the curb lane, you wind up with the two-way traffic on what had been a lane for traffic. And so what we learned is they were putting in the traffic signals on the mast over at Sooner and 59th is that traffic would stack up regularly every day for at least 1,000 feet or so to Greenview and a little beyond, so we've kind of seen what's going to happen when there's going to be just one lane of traffic. City staff has said, understandably so, only 9,000 cars per day generally on 59th Street, pretty low traffic, but when you constantly, but those couple of hours a day can create real problems for us and for, not just us, but for people who work at those places. You know, it's one thing to recruit economic development, great jobs like they have at
30 seconds remaining.
But those folks are also impacted. We have to take care of these new employees who move to our city after they come here as well. So really, I'm asking for four things, basically, much like what Don Lacy has said. I really believe that it'd be wise just to issue a change order somehow to not build that stretch from Sooner to a little bit east of Greenview, and then kind of study it, maybe redesign it, come up with a better solution, because the existing bike trail that's been there since 2011 Because the existing bike trail that's been there since 2011 as part of the Citywide Trails Master Plan, it's probably seven feet wide, probably adequate to deal with all cyclists for that area from Sooner to the east, and build a little ramp, you know, a little bit east of Greenview so cyclists can make the transition from the super sidewalk to the cycle track. And then the third thing is, you know, this sort of thing probably can happen citywide in your other wards where residents aren't necessarily consulted about the prospect of removing two out of four traffic lanes next to their neighborhood for four miles. Each of you can imagine what would happen if something like that came up in your ward, and as innovative and nice as the cycle track's going to be, I really believe the city ought to enact some kind of a policy where, when this kind of thing is going to be happening, where you're removing, you know, lanes of traffic, that there ought to be a policy about notifying at least 100 people having a meeting.
Thank you, Larry. We are way past time, so thank you so much.
And I appreciate your indulgence. The final thing is, please let us know.
I'll follow up with both of you on that.
Thank you. A lot of other folks are upset. We're just going to show. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. That concludes Citizens to Be Heard. We're going to go back for a couple of executive sessions, and we will return.